Hello.
Hello and good evening.
Hi, Jody. How are you?
I'm good, and yourself?
Good. You guys got a night off last night?
We did, I know. Crazy.
Yeah, well.
City Hall did have service, but we just knew the rest of the community didn't. So I think they run off GWI. I think they run off GWI, I think is our city server, so. Because it was only Spectrum, anybody that had Xfinity or anything like that, so. But we just knew it was too big of a meeting to take any chances.
Yeah, right.
But backs us up for the next couple of weeks.
See Matt Joyce, Joyce with us. Have a good people.
How are, how are you?
Good. How's everybody? Staying healthy, I hope?
Just here living the dream.
Yeah. Living the dream. Okay, wait and see if, well, we're still missing Alyssa and Jeff and Sean. So we'll wait a couple more minutes here. There's Alyssa.
So Jody, is your understanding that two agendas next Monday are going to be crammed into one?
Yeah.
Terrific.
No, we're just, we kind of, we're keeping the same schedule. And then just looked at some of the items and what can be pushed a little bit and then kind of move some of the department presentations. Regroup them a little bit, but. Yeah. It didn't help. It wasn't good timing.
Yeah.
Okay. How many candidates are there for the ward? What is it, Ward five?
Three. Three. Right. So it won't be as long as the last set.
Right. That'll help.
But we're anticipating a very large public comment, so that will be.
Yeah. An engaged neighborhood.
Yes, very, yeah, very much so. And so that will, that will be a majority of the time and we want. But most people have fortunately sent in their emails and have made their. Support known and. We are going to try to limit, keep that down if, you know, if you've submitted.
Yep.
Then, you know, the call kind of, we got to. Keep it down, but.
Makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
All right, here we go. I see we've been joined by Jeff. Jeff is here. That's good. Welcome, Jeff.
Evening. Thank you.
I'm going to have a problem in the future because if we, if our prospective new appointee to the board, who was also another Jeff. Uh, this is going to get complicated. Uh, but I'll deal with it.
I know, unfortunately, we didn't get his appointment done last night either.
No.
That will be next, that will be next week.
Nor did you get Sean's reappointment done, but that's okay. He should still be with us today.
Yeah.
Uh, waiting for him to see if he's going to come online or not. He didn't indicate has he, Bob or Isabel whether or not he's going to be wait, joining in?
Have, have not heard this week.
Okay, well, it's only a couple of three minutes in, so let's, let's wait a little bit longer to see if he.
Alyssa, are you refreshed from vacation?
Yeah. I'm sorry I didn't bring warm weather back with me.
Yeah, I, I have mine next week, so I'm, I'm looking, I'm ready.
And we totally skipped last year. You know, usually, usually we go to Florida in October and then we have friends in Vegas that we go see and we hadn't, we hadn't done either last year. And it's like, we're so ready.
Well, that's, yeah, this is a trip that we've canceled three times last year.
There you go, Jody. Yeah, it's like, God.
Yep. And we just finally said, we got to get this done.
This time. Well, I don't know if Sean's going to join us or not, but let me see, Matt's out of the room too. Oh, wait till Matt comes back, wandering back into the room. And then we'll get rolling if we can. Hopefully we'll have. Not too bad in tonight. Is Matt coming back? Having been trimmed from five items to three, I think we should have. A good evening. Let's hope so. All right, let's get started. We'll see if Sean joins us as we come along here, but. Let me call to order the Tuesday, April 26th, uh, 20, April 6th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. For. Members of the public and whoever is listening in this evening, uh, let me indicate that the planning board members, uh, you know. Ah, here's Sean. Thank you, Sean, for joining us. And so we are now at literally full strength on the planning board, six out of seven with the vacancy still existing. We introduce the board. Uh, my name is Dr. Rod, current chair of the Planning Board in San Francisco. Alyssa Boothard is here, our vice chair. Joyce Larry Clark, Matt Prevenco, Jeff Broschu, and Sean Nickwes, all planning board members are here and present this evening, participating in the meeting. Also joining us is Jody McPhail, council from Ward Six, who's our liaison, uh, planning board liaison to the council. Bob Hamon, the city planner is here, and of course Isabel Exley, who is our most capable planning and economic associate. Who helps us through, uh, these meetings as we go along. She's here also. And I also see on screen Joel LeBarrios here, Public Works, uh, city engineer. Uh, to help us if we have any questions, uh, with regards to any items that are coming up this evening. And so. With all of that and having, uh, identified everybody's here. First item we have on our agenda is consideration of the minutes of previous meetings. And those are specifically the minutes, minutes of a meeting of March 30th, 2021. Members of the planning board, having reviewed the minutes, any comments or questions? Relative to the minutes as presented.
Mr. Chair, this is Joyce.
Yeah, Joyce.
Um, I had one addition on page four of our materials, which is page three of the proposed minutes. Um, we should add down near the bottom of the page that Josh Waterhouse did rejoin the meeting.
Okay.
There was a, there was a notation that he wasn't present, but then he rejoined the meeting.
He did. I recalled that, yes. Good catch, Joyce. Thank you. Uh, Isabel and Bob, I assume we could make that, you know, that amendment to the meetings. Very simply.
Yes.
Any other concerns or comments relative to the meetings as presented? Could I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented with the amendments, uh, with the amendment, if you will, as, as proposed by Joyce?
Mr. Chair, this is Joyce. I move to approve the proposed minutes as amended.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, it's Matt. I'll second.
Matt seconds. Thank you very much, Matt. Discussion by members of the board. Then I'll poll the board. Alyssa.
I was absent, Solidstein.
Thank you, Alyssa. Matt?
Yeah.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Record will indicate the vote is five, uh, in favor of accepting minutes, one abstention. Thank you, members of the board. Next item we have on the, well, for those, um, I'm not sure, Bob. Those in attendance possibly for public hearings this evening. Uh, will make it known that the public hearing and continuation of the consideration of the item for Saco Island East. Uh, has been, uh, was tabled last week and is, uh, further tabled this evening to a subsequent meeting.
Correct.
Just to make everyone aware of that. And also, we should probably make. The general public aware if anyone is sitting out there waiting that item seven on our agenda. For proposed amendments to Brookside Two subdivision have also been tabled to a subsequent meeting. And so I want members of the general public to know that in case they're sitting and waiting. To comment during a public hearing on those items. All right, that being, uh, dispensed with, then the next item we really have on our agenda this evening is item four. This is probably, this is a public hearing for proposed amendments to the Park North and the Cascade subdivision. Uh, the applicant is Park North Development LLC. Uh, it is a contract zone. And our goal this evening is to make a finding on the application completeness for subdivision revision or change. Uh, to hold a public hearing and review the final plan based on the subdivision regulations. Uh, Bob, uh, and staff, are there any additional comments in addition to what you've already presented to the planning board? Uh, in your memorandum submitted in the package?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would only note that we've had a, a fair amount of interest, uh, locally, right there in the neighborhood. And I believe in your packets are perhaps four or five emailed messages from evidently residents of that Park North neighborhood. Uh, but beyond that, uh, no, this is just as, uh, submitted by the applicant, actually a few months ago now. And, uh, this is ready to move forward.
Thank you, Bob. What I'll do is I'll ask Isabel if she will. Having made note of the submittals of comments by members of the public, if she'll do that. And enter those into the record during the public hearing that we have, uh, should we get to the point where we open the public hearing. Uh, on this particular application. In the interim. I would like to know if there are members of the planning board, uh, having reviewed what's already been submitted. In the packet for our consideration this evening, if you have any other additional, any additional comments or questions that you'd like to have. Registered, uh, explored at this point. Anyone members of the planning board? My sensing there's none. Uh, turning to the applicant, is someone representing the applicant here this evening?
Um, yes, the applicant is present and Sean Frank from Sibago Technics is available to answer any questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Isabel. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just have to promote him to speak.
Okay. Sean, we see you, uh, in addition to what's already been submitted, what's in our packet. You have anything additional that you'd like to add this evening?
Uh, just real quick, Mr. Chairman, uh, as Bob said, we did submit this, I think it was, uh, in January. And from our standpoint, it's a relatively straightforward, uh, revision we're talking about. Originally, we had, uh, the Community Center, uh, located on Manetta Drive. Uh, when I say originally, it's part of our last amendment, if you will, uh, which is right behind the apartments, uh, that have already been constructed out there. And then we had, uh, on either side of Waterfall Drive, we had, uh, 12 units in multiplexes, basically six unit buildings. Elliot, based upon, you know, I think some discussions with, uh, the neighborhood and, uh, you know, their preferences that we don't go with the six unit buildings. Uh, so what we're proposing now is basically to relocate, uh, the Community Center back to the west side of Waterfall Drive. Uh, that area that was going to be developed into the Community Center to further develop that into three single family house lots. Uh, and to build three duplexes, uh, on the eastly side of Waterfall Drive and to make Roaming Rock Road a public roadway. Uh, under that scenario, basically we're going from what had been 24 units, uh, proposed within, uh, six unit buildings to, uh, to nine units now, if you will. Uh, the three duplexes and the three single family homes. We are in receipt of the, uh, Public Works, uh, comments. We're comfortable with everything that they brought up, uh, and we are addressing those. Uh, the only item we did have is because, uh, we originally had, uh, the Community Center proposal, the three lots are. We don't have sewer within that section of Manetta Drive. It's coming from the back, uh, to a manhole there. And we just want to make sure that the, uh, the board and Public Works be comfortable with working with us in terms of obtaining, uh, sewer. Uh, to those three lots without having to go into Manetta Drive. Aside from that, Mr. Chairman, again, I think we see it as a relatively straightforward, uh, process. Or a proposal, uh, but between Elliot and I would be certainly happy to answer any questions that the board has. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. Board, as we move, board members, as we move toward a motion to find the materials, all the materials submitted, uh, comprise the complete application. Do you have any outstanding concerns or questions? Either for the applicant or for planning staff? My sensing there's none. Could I have a motion from the board to find, uh, the materials submitted? Uh, constitute a complete application for revision of the subdivision?
Mr. Chair, this is Joyce. I move that the board find the materials submitted in support of the proposed amendments to the Park North subdivision plan to be complete.
Thank you, Joyce. Is there a second?
This is Alyssa.
A second.
Alyssa's seconds. Thank you, Alyssa. Discussion by members of the board. I'll poll members of the board then. Alyssa?
Yes.
Matt?
Yeah.
Jeff, I mean, I'm sorry, Joyce.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Chair of all, yes. Record will indicate the vote is six oh, finding the submittal complete, application complete. Back to the board. Additional concerns, questions, comments?
Chair, this is Jeff.
Jeff?
Um, I had a couple, um, kind of going through some of the questions that were asked, uh, as part of our discussion. Page seven of our packet. Staff and council, I guess, asking for clarification. You know, it seems like for the last three that I've seen come before me, we're always talking about this trail system and it's, um, yet to be completed. And then we're talking about the traffic study and that's been a huge kind of underlying issue, um, of the update. And, uh, if I, if I recall, there was a condition, because there was a question here about the, um. The childcare center, the ownership, but I thought it was the childcare center. And it could be the apartments that are behind it, that they're supposed to have a fully constructed, um, traffic signal on Route One at Waterfall Drive. That is in place and set to flash until warrants are met prior to. Prior to an occupancy being granted. I'm just kind of wondering what the timeframe is of that. It says that the multi-unit is not going to be ready. For occupancy in 2021. And like I said, I have to do a little research to find out if it was for the daycare, um, or the multi-unit. It just seems like there's a lot of, of items that are left here on the line that haven't been brought together. And here we are now looking at another amendment to the site plan. And I'm just wondering, what's a realistic timeframe to get all of these things that need to get done, um, up to date?
Sean, turning to you for the applicant, could you provide some, you know, shed some light on that?
I, I would be happy to. Um, and again, it's just, unfortunately, we're just not, uh, doing these things in a bubble, as you can all understand. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of dealing with MDOT, uh, in the city of Saco in terms of the, uh, the traffic movement permit. It became quite complicated just because of the timeframe, if you will, in terms of when this project started versus where it is now. And, uh, in, in those types of things. But I think in terms of the specifics, uh, and again, we're obviously dealing with DEP as well on the trail system. So we are still going through the permitting process, but, uh, I think Elliot probably can shed a little bit more light in terms of the actual timing.
Is Elliot with us?
I, I believe Elliot's with us, uh, Isabel.
One second for the technology to catch up to us.
Yeah, sorry about that. Uh, there he is.
Can you hear me?
Who can that way?
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jeff, to answer your questions, um, Joe, we've been, Joe has been fully involved with the entire DOT process. From the very beginning, all the way up through now. Uh, he's actually handling a joint effort with the town, uh, Hancock and DOT on the Cascade end of the project. And we're working on the, uh, Waterfall East U-Pacway end of the project. DOT basically drives this entire process, their timing, their rules, the way they want to do things. We have a permanent hand. We are working on construction drawings, which, uh, are very close to being submitted. Uh, to DOT, uh, we met out there, a group of us dealing with temporary light situations at intersections, uh, powering up the lights. Joe was at that meeting, so, uh, nothing has happened that Joe hasn't been aware of. And could probably give you a better explanation as to, to where we are. We are hoping that we would submit during the month of April. DOT has a, uh, legal amount of time to review those construction drawings. Until we get those back and they say, yes, these are good to go, we, we can't do anything. My Sibago is actually doing the DOT for me. And the gentleman there, Brad, is hoping that we would probably by July or August have a full set of drawings back and approved from DOT. And depending on working with, uh, Joe and his staff, whether that's. And depending on working with Joe and his staff, whether that's something we can do, we're ready to go this fall. If DOT gave us the plans and everybody didn't have an issue with construction out there, August, September, October, we're ready to go now. The, what I think one of the big pieces in this permit, which I don't think people understand, there's no guarantee there's going to be a light there. We have to meet warrants. So as Joe knows, we have to go out and measure the traffic at probably at least once, if not as many as three or four times. Once we prove we meet warrants, then the physical light can go up and will be activated. It's my understanding, and Joe might be able to better answer this. It's, there either going to be no lights or you're going to have a full operating red light. I don't think you're going to have a light on yellow. I've been told DOT does not like to do that. So we're either going to meet warrants and you're going to see a full activated light system, or you're not going to see any lights at all. I certainly anticipate at some point we are going to meet warrants and you will see those lights up. But the widening and any underground prep work for that intersection, we're hoping we'll get sign off from DOT in time to do that construction this late summer, fall. Worst case scenario, it's next spring, we're widening Route One and doing the same thing and then waiting for warrants. Hancock, in conjunction with the city and DOT, they're under the exact same rule we are. So nobody can promise you're going to see warrants at Flag, meet warrants at Flag Pond. Nobody can guarantee we're going to meet warrants at Waterfall Drive. We all anticipate we're going to, and I certainly hope we do. We already have a letter of credit posted for an anticipated amount of work that is going to happen with an agreement that says, once the DOT drawings have been approved, we will reprice it. If we need to put up more money, we're supposed to do that within 60 days. If it's enough, we would, we would just move forward. As far as, there was four conditions that allowed us to have uses on Eastview Parkway. Two of those four have been met over a year ago. One of them, that trail is 98% complete. As a coincidence, some special material that we had to order took about a month and a half to get in, showed up at my shot today. And we fully expect to have that last 2%, which is a 16-foot little trail bridge to be installed before the end of April. The last piece is a sidewalk from, on Cascade Road, where Waterfall hits Cascade. I guess it would be east, east of Waterfall down to, there's a guardrail there. That has been designed. We got, if anybody remembers, we were at the council to try to get permission to move forward with that earlier or to post a letter of credit. That didn't work out. So we asked DOT if they would be willing to look at the sidewalk, that piece of sidewalk on its own, even though it was part of the entire DOT packet, because it is a fairly simple item. They were willing to do that. That has been submitted to them approximately two to three weeks ago. We're hoping we would have that sometime in the month of April, signed off on, and if it is, we'll be building that in May. And that would be the four items which would take care of, we would now be able to come into the planning board and we have like three people that want to get going on commercial lots. And we've been told we can't even submit to the planning board for those, for those people. Once that happens, we would be able to, under those two new uses that were allowed. So I think that answers all your questions, Jeff, but if I didn't, or if you have another one, please let me know.
Wait, let me, let me stop here for a second. You know, planning board, let's not lose focus. Okay, the focus here is not to review the entire, you know, development up there. The focus is to try to determine whether or not these changes that are being requested on very specific lots, you know, are appropriate to be approved or not as a subdivision. And so let's try to keep our focus on that particular request and not in total what's happening to the Park North Cascade contract zone development. Other members of the board? Comments, questions specific to the related request? All right, if there are none at this point, then I think it might be appropriate, we have to have a public hearing. And so if I could, I'd like to have a motion to open a public hearing on the requested change. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff. I moved to open the public hearing.
Jeff, thank you. Is there a second?
Chair, this is Sean. I second.
Sean, seconds. Thank you very much, Sean. Discussion by members of the board. Then I'll poll the board. Matt?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Awaissa?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Record will indicate the vote is 6-0. Public hearing is open. Isabel, do we have anybody lined up?
It's our first public hearing of the evening. If you'd like to participate, just use the digital raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen, or since I see that you have some cellphone users, star nine on your cellphone. And I'll give people a moment to participate. And, Mr. Chair, while we're waiting to see if anyone wants to speak during this public hearing, I should add that we received a number of emails that were included in the packet. If you would prefer me to read them into the record, I'm happy to do so, but they are included in the packet for this meeting.
Yes, I know they're included in the packet, but I think I would like to have the opportunity to have them read into the record. If you would, Isabel, I know it's a lot of work, but if you would do that for us, I'd appreciate it at this point.
Yeah, I don't mind. I don't see anyone with their hands raised to speak, so I'll go ahead and give me one second to pull that up. I can start doing that.
Okay.
Sorry about the lag there. I swear I was ready. My computer decided to stop working. So the first person I have is from Frank and Kathleen Rossi, and they reside at 12 Roaring Rock Road. This letter is to support the proposed amendment to property in the Cascade Falls subdivision put forth by Park North Development and Chamberlain Homes and is set for review by the Saco Main Planning Board, March 30th, 2021, obviously tabled from last time. We have resided in the Cascade Falls development since March 16th, 2016, and on Roaring Rock Road as the first residence. We believe that the proposed changes can only enhance the quality of living in this well-planned and attractive subdivision. Our residence is one that directly is affected by this proposal and we urge your close consideration and ultimately approval. Neighbors on our street of three condominium duplexes and others who moved to Cascade Falls contacted and worked with Elliot Chamberlain. And he worked on these changes with us, just as he did when we approached him to make us, to help us make our new home at Cascade Falls. He listened to our needs, our ideas and our wants. He is a developer who has a a fine work ethic, a vision he shares, is obviously open to change and is tenacious in making Cascade Falls an attractive, safe and desired location to live in the city of Saco. Thank you for your time. We appreciate the work that you and other public servants do to make Saco one of the best coastal Maine towns there is. We are very pleased with our decision to make our summer place your place. Should you need more information or have questions, please contact us. Ranking Kathleen Rossi. The next, the next email is from Pat Flood. My name is Pat Flood and I live in the Cascade Falls development at Nine Quarry Lane. I am in favor of Mr. Chamberlain's submitted plans to decrease the intensity of the planned development on adjacent Roaring Rock Road. I am writing today simply to encourage that this item be placed on the next available agenda of your planning committee. Thanks for your consideration and thanks for the work that you do for our community. Sincerely, Pat Flood, Nine Quarry Lane. The next email is from a Mike DeRobio, members of the City of Saco Planning Board. I am a resident of the Cascade Falls subdivision, living at Nine Creek Said Drive. My name is Michael DeRobio and my wife and I have been residents of Saco since 2016. We are one of the first three families to live in this Chamberlain community. During the past several years, we have witnessed and have lived through the development of Cascade Falls by Park North LLC and Chamberlain Builders. The development has taken place in a way that is exactly as it was represented to us. The requested changes before you are in fact the result of discussions between current residents of our community and with Park North LLC. Community members initiated the discussion and offered ideas and possible changes that we felt might improve on the original plan that currently exists. Park North's respectful and open-minded collaboration with community members has resulted in the proposal that you are now considering. There is no personal self-interest represented here, but rather a common goal that we all here agree will be an improved use of Lot MA1 to be R36, R37 and R38 as single-family lots and Lot CA being divided into CA1 and CA2 for multifamily use, but with the significant added benefit of allowing for the right-of-way for Roaring Rock Road, which does not exist today under the current plan. The board's approval is not just a request from Park North alone. It represents a request from our entire community that will not only improve the use of land to be developed, but also allow for a higher quality result from that development that will serve the best interest of the Cascade Falls residents who live here now and those who will be drawn in to live in one of Saco's premier communities in the future. My wife and I wholeheartedly support this request, change and ask that the board do the same. Thank you for considering my comments and thank you to all the board members for the important work that you do for our community. If I can be of any further assistance to you or Park North in this matter, or provide additional help that will assist in your favorable decision, please contact me. Kind regards, Michael DeRobio, Nine Quarry Lane. And this letter is from David and Judy Dyer. Mr. Hamlin, we are residents of Cascade Falls and understand that there is a request from the developer to get an item on the planning board agenda. This is basically a change and improvement from the existing development plans. It basically reduces the number of units planned for Roaring Rock Road to six. This is a positive change for the neighborhood and we respectfully request that it be placed on the planning board agenda at the earliest possibility. We know that there are a number of high-profile items that are taking up significant time for the board. However, this change request is straightforward and minor and should take just a few minutes of the board's time in a future meeting. Thanks in advance for your understanding and help with this matter. Respectfully, Dave and Judy Dyer, Eight Quarry Lane. And this letter is from a Greg Polk, Ten Minetta Drive. Afternoon, I live in the Cascade subdivision on Lot R2, Ten Minetta Drive since September 2018. My name is Greg Polk. I would like to have this written email put into the public hearing on 3/30/2021. Of course, this was tabled, on the proposed lot changes, R36, R37 and R38 to be single-house lots. Unless these lots are going to have survey pins on each lot to identify the proper property line location done by a survey company like Sibego Technics. If that is not done, then I do not want the planning board to approve these changes for these lots. For background, the planning board needs to know that in the spring of 2019, I wanted to do some outside landscaping projects, fencing, planting more trees near my property lines. I contacted Saco Code about their regulations, then contacted Durigo Management, who manages communication to Chamberlain Homes for their approval. Through this process, I learned that my property lines were done by GPS by Chamberlain Homes, who are not a survey company, and I was told they may not be correct. I still have email threads through Durigo stating this. I then contacted Sibego Technics Survey Company to survey my property lines, which took over a month before they could get out to do the job. I did not pay to have the survey done. My GPS wooden stakes were not correct. Survey company showed me that. So now I have property, so I now have survey pins metal-marked by a survey company that are correct. I know of another neighbor in the subdivision who already had a fence installed by the GPS wooden markers and had to move the fence six feet onto his correct property line. When a new home was being built next to them at his cost, I believe I'm the only homeowner in this subdivision that has survey pins to identify property line locations. The lot sizes in this subdivision are small, .21 to .3. Three acres costing between 93, these survey pins on each lot in these subdivisions in the town of Saco. If you don't already have those rules in place, it was very frustrating to go through this process, which took way too long. I do not want our new neighbors to come into this subdivision to go through what I and my other neighbor had to. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Red Polk, Ten Minetta Drive. And that's the last item that I had received.
Thank you, Isabel. Is there anyone else lined up to speak? While we're still in the public hearing.
I don't have anyone with their hands raised.
All right, while we're in the public hearing, Elliot, Sean, would you like to address the issues that were raised by this individual on the accuracy of the survey boundaries and whatever?
Yes, thank you, Dylan. This, it's a little bit inaccurate what was portrayed there. We, we have GPS equipment. He's 100% right. We are not surveyors and we've never pretended to be. And we don't, we can't stamp anything. But every lot for the last 15 years in both Cascades and in Dunston, which has even smaller lots than Cascades, we have, in the beginning, there are no pins. We try to wait till a phase is mostly done, which Sean can relay to you, that's typical in the development business. We are 100% aware that we need to set all pins and monuments at some point, especially before the town would ever accept or the city would ever accept the roadway. We have set stakes after we've left the job. For some people, as a convenience, we happened to do one last Friday for an individual. And I went as far as telling him that I was confident enough that if those were wrong, I would pay personally to move his fence. The person that Mr. Polk referred to, the builder that built beside him was a friend of mine. I had nothing to do with building the house. He actually paid to move that fence because it was a benefit to him. Somebody used, in his case, a stake that was not ours. We never set it. In Mr. Polk's case, I don't 100% know what happened. We only set wooden stakes when we go in to clear the lot, build the house. By the time we're done and the lawn's all done, those stakes don't exist anymore. If, when Mr. Polk submitted for some work to be done, he was putting in, I think, a fence and a patio. Actually, that went through Durigo. I'm the one that personally approved what he was doing. And I told Durigo, I said, I know there's a stake out there between what happens to be my sister and Mr. Polk. And I said, I'm not sure if that's accurate. And we went out and moved the front one. I had no idea he was hiring Sibego to go out and do that at the time. But you're right, anybody that asks me to do it, I typically do. But I do follow it up with, we're not a surveyor. We, I can't stamp it, but in the last 15 years, to give you an example, the 72 unit that Jeff brought up earlier, that entire building was set with my GPS. I'm within a quarter of an inch of every corner of that building, elevation-wise, location-wise. I'm not going to build a multimillion-dollar building if I didn't feel comfortable with the equipment we were using. But Mr. Polk is right, we have to set pins and monuments in the entire subdivision. If this approval gets done, whether it stayed as a lot for the community center or whether that lot became three house lots, obviously, we realize we need to set pins on every lot, for the condos, for the homes, the monuments, that's a foregiven. So I apologize that Mr. Polk went through that aggravation. I didn't understand that he was hiring somebody else to do it, but at the same time, I don't, I think the portrayal in his letter is a little bit inaccurate.
Thank you, Elliot. Isabel, is there anyone else lined up for the public hearing to speak? We're having a little trouble with your audio tonight, Isabel. But anyway.
Don't have anyone with their hands raised.
All right, then. That being the case, probably it's appropriate at this point to close the public hearing. Can I have a motion to that effect?
Chair, this is Jeff. I moved to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second?
The chair, this is Sean. My second.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Sean. Discussion. I'll poll members of the board. Sean?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Matt?
Yeah.
Chair votes yes. Record will indicate the vote is six oh to close the public hearing. Back to members of the board. Remaining concerns, questions, any? And once again, concentrating, if I may, once again, concentrating on the issue of the Watt division, you know, that's being proposed. Joyce, yes?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make sure we addressed the memorandum from the city engineer, Joe LaBarriere, which is on pages thirty-three, thirty-four of our materials. I know Sean had mentioned earlier, Sean Frank had mentioned earlier that they were, I think, agreeing with all of those, but if you could just go through, you know, the drainage management, the electrical transformer, do those need to be made as additional conditions of approval? Or have they been taken care of?
Excellent point. Thank you, Joyce. Let's turn to Joe. Joe, do you have any remaining concerns with the way things are progressing?
Well, I mean, I heard Sean say that they're working on them, I guess, and I'm fine with that. If you want to make it as a condition, I guess, I mean, there's no doubt that, I mean, I have not seen drawings yet or revised plans that, that reflect how these are, you know, they're all solvable, but I'm just saying, we do not have a revised set of drawings that show how these are being addressed yet, so.
And I agree with that, Mr. Chairman. Again, like I say, it was in progress and I certainly understand what Joe's saying. If you're comfortable with the conditional, I mean, obviously, we were holding off resubmitting just based upon how this meeting went, which of course, we kind of anticipated was going to be actually last Monday, so. But I'm with Joe. Again, I think a lot of the issues came back as the fact that Roaring Rock Road was constructed in the anticipation of twelve units being constructed across the street. And in fact, now it's duplexes. Like I say, I thought the only issue that we really had was the fact that there is no sewer in Manetta Drive and just working with Joe in terms of getting the service to the existing manhole that was, the existing manhole that was installed to our service, the, the rec center. But aside from that, we saw everything as relatively straightforward. And again, I, I certainly agree with Joe that he has not seen revised plans. Like I say, we just didn't want to go through that process until we kind of wrapped it up with you folks, so we just kind of did it one more time.
Sean, if I, if I could jump in for a second, just to kind of maybe simplify, most of the comments that Joe had come up with on Roaring Rock would all happen if this got approved. If this didn't, if for some reason the board didn't approve it and we stayed with the two-six-unit buildings, then none of those changes would be made. We wouldn't move the transformer, move the catch basin, undo, cancel any utility. So it's kind of a case of we, we can't go do that if, if this doesn't get approved. But if it does get approved, you're right, Sean's right, we one-hundred percent agree with Joe. There are certain things that need to be moved or changed to go from accommodating two-six-unit buildings to three-two-unit buildings. Probably the biggest issue is where the community was on Manita. We had brought a six-inch sewer stub from the current apartments on Elijah James Drive because the first roughly three hundred feet of Manita has no sewer in it whatsoever. It doesn't start until you get down to the first house lot, which happens to be, I think, eight, eight Manita. We would like to service those three lots off of that instead of trenching up Manita Drive and extending the sewer, or God forbid, going into waterfall, which is an extremely deep sewer. So I, as Joe said, I think that's all doable. So there's nothing technical out there, but a lot of these changes would not be made if for some reason this didn't get, none of these changes would be made if this approval didn't get accepted.
So let me ask, from the board's point of view, what, between you, Joe, and Sean, and Elliot, what would be an acceptable set of conditions that could be attached, as Joyce has indicated, to the approval of the proposed provision to the subdivision? What would you gentlemen suggest?
I'm comfortable, Mr. Chairman, if Joe is in terms of that, you know, that, you know, the, the plans be revised to address the comments raised within this January fifteenth memorandum from the, from the city engineer is satisfaction. If Joe's comfortable with that, I certainly am as well.
And Joe, what is your take on that?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I mean, I think we've done this on a couple other phases similarly. Where, you know, prior to construction, we've kind of finalized drawings and there's been some minor changes, mostly utility stuff, which is really what this is. The only thing I would, not fully understanding your solution to the sewer, I guess if it's out of the right-of-way and it's intended to be in the fronts of the lots, I guess my only question is on the subdivision plat, whether there's some easements that are going to have to be created for that sewer, whatever your plan. So that's the one thing I'm a little uncertain about in terms of a final subdivision plat, but maybe those could all still be resolved before you folks sign anything. And if an additional easement needs to be added, then, then it is. But I'm fine with, you know, in general, I think as long as we can get to disclosure to these comments, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I, I agree with Joe. I think if this got approved, I think Sean and I would go directly. The next step would be to work with Joe to get everything the way he wants it and for it to be acceptable for all parties, redraw the plan, and then I maybe bring it back before the board for signature, is, which is a little different, but I'm, I'm fine with that.
So Joyce, what, what's your take on, on that, given that you brought the, the concern up to begin with?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how to, if we're drafting a motion to approve with a condition of approval that the plans be revised to include the changes requested by the city engineer, or if we're doing some sort of tentative approval subject to additional review by, by, by the board. Is it coming back to, are the, are the revised plans coming back to us again, or are they just being reviewed by city staff?
Well, it seems, yeah, I, I don't know that the board, you know, needs to take it upon itself as an action, a separate action, you know, to once again approve the plans. It seems, you know, perfectly appropriate to attach a condition that says the final plans signed by the board for the approved subdivision amendment are, you know, are based on or satisfy all of the conditions or all of the questions that Joe has previously had and remain with him to this day with, you know, with certain provisions of the way the amendment to the lot lines and whatever is going to be handled. And I, that's not, I, I recognize that that's not a great set of, of words to be used to phrase this, but you might, it, it seems appropriate that, that the approval would be conditioned on that. And is that the direction that you're going, Joyce? Okay, I see you shaking your head. Okay, I understand. While you're doing that, any remaining concerns, questions by members of the board? Okay, sensing there are none other. Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I guess, this is Jeff.
Good, Jeff.
I'm kind of wondering, listening and, you know, reviewing Mr. LaBarriere's, you know, memo, seems like there's, there's a fair amount of things that we typically would be scrutinizing under subdivision review and and amendment that aren't really on the plan. And obviously, there's a tremendous support from the community out there. They all feel like this is a welcome thing for their neighborhood. Would it just be more appropriate to table and let the applicant come back with the revised plans that are satisfactory to the city engineer and we can approve and move it through in, in one motion? That way, we would also see things such as, you know, the streetlight locations at each end of Roaring Rock. You know, if there are going to need to be any easements for the drainage or possibly where this transformer gets relocated to. You know, that way, everything is kind of covered and we've kind of been a little bit more thorough in, in doing the evaluation because we would have a truly completely plain.
Well, if I can suggest, Jeff, you know, the planning board really, you know, is in, obviously, always in reliance on our professionals that support us in what we're doing. Joe has obviously listed and registered all his concerns. In my mind, you know, rather than have a trip come back to the planning board once all this has been resolved, I think as, as probably, you know, Joyce is suggesting, it, it may be perfectly appropriate to just condition the approval of the subdivision amendment all on the, all of the technical issues that have been raised by Joe, having been resolved to his satisfaction by the applicant in order for this final subdivision tenth amendment plan to be signed. I don't know that it really needs a trip back to the planning board for another round of consideration. You know, when you think about it, we, we've done this before. We've conditioned approvals on, you know, satisfactory resolution of a lot of technical issues that have been raised in the past. And without having it have to come back to the board again, you know, for, for, you know, further consideration. What would we at that point hear? What would we hear at that point is Joe LaBarriere saying, everything's been resolved to my satisfaction on the plan. And, and why does that need an extra trip to the planning board? You know, there's, there's no reason why we can't just simply condition approval and final signature of the plan by the planning board on Joe's satisfaction with all of the issues that he raised being resolved by the revised plan. And let me just suggest that, that, you know, may be the, you know, the more expeditious, if you will, plan or course of action for everyone involved. So do, is, is anyone prepared to make a motion, one way or the other? Joyce, I see your hand up if you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
I think I had it backwards. I'd like to make a motion that the board grant approval for the preliminary plan for the tenth amended subdivision plan for Park North based on the amended plan submitted and the findings of fact and conditions of approval dated January eighth, two thousand and eight, with an additional condition of approval tonight, that the plans be revised to include all of the technical changes requested in the city engineer's memorandum dated January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one to the satisfaction of city staff.
Thank you, Joyce. Is there a second to that? I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Mr. Chair, this is Sean. I second.
Sean, thank you, Sean. Discussion by members of the board. I'll poll members of the board then. Joyce?
Mr. Chair, Jeff had his hand raised. I think he wanted to make a comment.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Okay, I didn't see that. Thank you. Go ahead, Jeff.
I was just thinking, would Ms. Clark want to consider, you know, some sort of a condition with regards to a timeline for them to be setting their monuments? Just where there was public input with regards to that. I mean, seemingly, there's a lot of things that are just kind of hanging out there and what time they'll be completed. And I don't know if you have any concerns or if it's okay with the way that they've been proceeding. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Joyce, back to you. Are you, do you see an amendment in your motion or you?
I, Bob, Bob, Bob might have some input on this in terms of the timing of, of the typical timing of monuments.
All right, Mr. Chairman, thank you. If I'd heard any concerns expressed by our code office or by our city engineer to that effect, I would be the first to support that. I've heard none. David Toomey, Don Fisk, et cetera, are conscientious, know their jobs. And if there were any concerns on their part. Mr. Chamberlain, how many units are built out here today? Can you give me a rough number? About eighty-five. I, I mean, I, I appreciate Mr. Broschu's concern to the people that I work with, day in and day out, it does not appear to be a concern. So Joyce, that's what I have to offer for you.
Further discussion of the motion. So back to you, Joyce. Do you see any, any? You see any ending driving you to amend your motion at this point? As suggested by Jeff?
I, I don't think so at this time. It sounds like, I, I mean, I know, I know Codes is issuing building permits and certificate of occupancy apparently without, without issue here, so. No, I don't, I don't, I'm not going to amend.
All right, thank you, Joyce. Further discussion of the motion, members of the board? If not, then I'll poll members of the board. Again, the motion is to grant approval as submitted with the additional condition of approval, as Joyce has stated, and I'm not going to repeat it. It's in the record. So anyway, I'll poll members of the board. Joyce?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Girl vote, yes. To indicate the vote is six oh. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item we have on our agenda is public hearing for consideration of a chapter eighty-one, specifically sale of city-owned property. Recommendation be made by the planning board regarding the property at thirty-two Market Street, identified as lot thirty-five on tax map fifty-one. The goal is to review the request as, as submitted and provide a memorandum or recommendation, excuse me, to the city council regarding whether or not to sell the property. And so before we get into this, let me just briefly say, folks, once again, we've already reviewed this three, I believe, some three years ago under a similar situation, and this is basically reflective, I think, of basically that review that we performed three years ago. I want to caution the board, this is not a site plan review. And this is not also or either a review of how the city of Saco is disposing of the property, whatever financial arrangements they're making with a prospective buyer of the property or whatever. And let me remind the planning board on chapter eighty-one, our focus is very simple. Our focus is simply to look at the property in question with the city, which the city currently owns, and to make a determination in our evaluation as to whether or not that property should remain in the hands of the city. Does it have some benefit, either existing today or in the future to the city of Saco? Or is the property of such character that it has basically no existing or future use to the city and should be disposed of? And so as we move through this evening, through this this evening, we should try to concentrate. We need to concentrate on that specific issue, whether or not the property, you know, should remain with the city or not. And in that regard, then, I'll turn to Bob and I'll say, Bob, in addition to the memo that you've already submitted to us on the property or any other concerns, comments that you'd like to make to the board? uh, concerns, comments that you'd like to make to the board.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only that, um, at the last meeting in this, perhaps goes back to January. Uh, the the individuals who are, um, seeking uh, to potentially develop this, uh, piece of property uh, were with us that evening and the board did not have an opportunity to hear from them. Um, Carl Lacary and Don Black are with us again this evening. Uh, I believe Guy Gagnon, who's also involved, is attending another meeting right now, but, uh, I would just encourage the board, if you're curious to hear from the development side of thing, um, just what's proposed, or if you have any questions for these folks. I believe they're on the Zoom meeting with us. Uh, beyond that, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set.
Once again, once again, though, I want to caution the board that spending a lot of time asking potential developers of the property what they plan to do and how that will all happen is is almost outside the relevance of what we're here to do this evening, right? Let's keep the focus on the fact that is this piece of property valuable to the city to retain or not? All right. And I I just want to keep us focused on that if we can. Any other members of the board have any comments or concerns before we move ahead? Jeff, you have your hand up.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, I mean, I felt like we had made fairly good progress on this at the last meeting and and obviously one of the snafus was the request that we, you know, the the functionality of the purpose this lot could serve for connectivity of of trail systems and, uh, the the park. The existing Diamond Park. So obviously we've got that feedback. It's in our packet. It seems pretty clear to me. So hopefully to kind of summarize my view of future use of the park. Um, if if we could hear from the applicant, would they be able, do they think they could make it work granting a forty-foot wide easement along the railroad tracks where the city would have access across, kind of meeting a lot of goals. Um, and it would still have the benefit of trying to increase its housing base, which is part of our long-term goals. Um, which could be possibly win-win for, you know, a couple of different parties. Um, and if they can't, then I think we, as a board, kind of look back at particularly at Director Sumner's um, review, thinking that he also had the idea of a being retained for a city dog park. And I think that's where I think I feel like our focus should really be for the value of this land. So um, at some point, Mr. Chair, when you think it's appropriate, I'd like to hear from the 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 enquirers. Um, if they think that they could make it work with a forty-foot easement granted to the city, um, for trail use along the railroad tracks.
Good, Jeff. Thank you. Yeah. Other members of the board? Some more questions, comments along those lines?
Yeah, this is Joyce. My my thoughts are exactly the same as Jeff's, um, that that it would be nice if if we could do both. And is that, is is that a workable solution?
All right. Thank you, Joyce. Anyone else? Members of the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is Sean. I'm over similar. I'm over a similar mindset. Um, wondering if there's an opportunity for some compromise here based on the input we received. I think that would be the ultimate win-win if that's viable and I'd like to hear from the developers. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Anyone else? Members of the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm not here.
Yeah, Matt.
Um, I'm just kind of thinking back, um, what I was initially thinking myself and then your comment as well. This is isn't it starting to kind of get into planning? You know, into site plan, you know, kind of realm here where we're talking about easements and can this work for the project? You know, we're kind of, we're isn't that kind of getting into it? We're talking with developer. I mean, this is like to your original comment where the, does it benefit to the city to retain the property or or not? Regardless of easements or potential site planning or pieces and parts to it, you know what I mean? I don't, I don't want this to spiral out of control.
I understand, Matt.
More of a question.
And I would share your concern about that, but in the context of what we're doing, the issues I think that Matt, uh, that Jeff and Joyce and Sean have raised along the lines of what can what can remain as a benefit to the city, it probably, you know, very relevant. You know, to our consideration as a planning board as to what our recommendation is to the council to do with the property. Um, if the applicant is willing to compromise and provide some benefit to the city, then that certainly I think plays a role, uh, in our recommendation as a planning board as to to the council as to what they should do with the property. Uh, and that really doesn't get into, I don't think, site planning at that particular point. I mean, the the council or, excuse me, the applicant really has to listen to the consideration or the concerns we have. And then make a threshold decision about whether or not, uh, they can move forward. You know, with the project proposed on the property, making certain concessions to the city. And so I think i- in my mind, what Jeff and Joyce and Sean are suggesting and not to set aside what your concerns are, Matt, I think we can have those discussions with the applicant. You know, without really getting into site planning at that particular point. Um, because, you know, what, let's have the applicant say one way or the other. Uh, can he consider these these concessions or not? And that is, I think, fundamental, you know, maybe fundamental to our recommendation to the council as to what to do with the property. Um, Alyssa, you have your hand up.
Um, thank you. Just echoing that a bit and others, I think I'm in agreement that it makes sense to make sure the city has rights to a portion of this parcel that will allow for future growth or connectivity with the Eastern Trail. And so I think my recommendation focusing on our our goal is to say to to the council, go ahead and sell it. Just make sure you're saving a portion of this for the city recreational use. And it, you know, to Matt's point, it it's irrelevant to me to hear tonight if this potential applicant, you know, can work with that or not, because all we're tasked to do is tell the city that it is not a parcel worth holding on to minus a portion that could be useful for this eastern eastern trail piece.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I echo that. I think Alyssa said it well. I would I I see this regardless of the the applicant or the potential, but more of of the city um, retaining some sort of flexibility in it. I I think that that's an important piece, but how it gets used, we can work that through later.
Thank you, Matt. Anything further from members of the board? Then probably what it might be appropriate to do at this point is turn to the applicant if they're representative here this evening. And see if we can start this discussion.
They are here.
Great, thanks. Um, my name's Carl Lacary. I live in Saco. I am an affordable housing developer and been working with nonprofits for probably thirty years now. Um, we, Guy Gagnon came to me about four, five or six years ago and said that he had been having discussions with the Saco City Council regarding the property at thirty-two Market Street. And was very interested in, um, talking about the possibility of collaborating to create an affordable housing uh, development there. And we came up with the idea that you've seen now, um, with, uh, ten house amenities. Um, Guy will probably chime in at some point in this, and I'll try to keep it short. But, you know, it was a challenge to fit even the ten small units on that piece of property in terms of being developable land, and we were right up against it in terms of feasibility of doing a development at all. So we had to fit not only the housing, but also the parking and so forth. It's a challenge also to, uh, provide any a space to that side of the property toward the railroad tracks because of the way it's laid out and the way the development is cited. Um, and so we proposed what you saw in your memo with a sort of a workaround in terms of and a jog around of the property on the other side of it. Um, and I think I'll let Guy talk a little bit since he seems to be available about that idea. He knows the land better than I do. Uh, but I would say very briefly that I think Alyssa believes idea was a good one. Uh, that you can recommend to the city council whether to part with the property or not. But you could also add conditions such as she mentioned, which is uh, to retain some pro- some open space for mixed-use development so that some of the land could be recreational in nature. Um, and as with any development, you know, our priority is to uh, you know, is to do something that works for all parties. And we also need to have site control in order to get going. So, you know, if we could get some blessing from the council in order to have a site control, which I would see as an option. Uh, we would be happy to include contingencies to the extent that we can negotiate them uh, to main retain some of the open space uh, for recreational use. We have no problem with that. It's just how we cite it is the issue. And whether it's feasible to do it, not only in terms of making the development feasible feasible, but also to have the open space and the walking path, uh, be a viable option for creation as well. Of the way it is laid out and the way the land slopes and so forth. Um, so if Guy is on the call, I mean, I would definitely kick it over to him to talk a little bit about that. Uh, as that is your main focus. Um, but I would just recommend that rather than letting it sit tonight again for another month or two as construction prices go up through the roof, that we try to get going on this with a recommendation to council to enter into an option and have the contingency of having open space recreational use be a part of the development. Um, that would be my piece. And Guy, are you available? Can you actually speak to the the actual, um, open space issue?
Um, yeah, can you all hear me? Okay.
We can.
Yep. Um, Guy Gagnon, uh, with Bedford Housing. Um, so, uh, I just I realized there's a lot of time has passed, so it makes it difficult for people to try to put the pieces back together. And Carl and I are probably the only two that have been through this process from the beginning that, um, so um, this, um, we really, when we had first approval, we really did a lot of communications with the with the city and we the whole project actually came out of the planning department. Uh, when Peter Morelli was the city planner, he's the one who approached us about uh, possibly doing something on this property. So, um, we thought we had a good plan. And as you all know, for a variety of reasons, things didn't happen and the market didn't help out. And our goal has always been to do housing. We don't want to do housing that is marginally better than what is affordability than people can find in the market. We wanted to make a real dent in the affordable housing issue. So, um, so as prices have gone up, um, it's become even more vitally important to provide affordable housing. Um, this project is so skinny financially that um, it's really teetering on being extinct if we start changing it much. There's a lot of engineering dollars in it, um. And, you know, unfortunately, the way the site is, the triangle shape, we've really maximized, maximized, we think, the project, and we think it's going to be a beautiful little neighborhood. Um, as far as as you can see by some of the plans, it's really difficult to do anything to adjust the homes on the railroad track side of the project. And I don't know, I I missed some of the early conversation here on this meeting because I was at another Zoom meeting. Um, but, um, we'd be definitely, we've always been willing to do something on the other end. In fact, we had talked about, um, doing uh, kind of, uh, a connection off of our driveway. And I remember us doing something like that, which would uh, allow for, you know, vehicles to maybe, maybe even park, have a place for people to park near where the parking lot is so that they could go from there and walk down, you know, along the boundary line. So um, I think, I think something can be done and hopefully would be uh, would be a benefit to the community and something that both the planning board and the city council would see as a benefit without basically, uh, strad uh, basically handcuffing the project in terms financially if we, if we can avoid it. As I said, I fear that um, anything major that we change right now is going to probably put the nail in the coffin on it.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, this is Carl again. I just, um, wanted to emphasize real quick that, you know, because we do not have site control as of yet, we haven't gone back to our engineers and started spending money again to uh, look at the options that have been presented um, in terms of the way the the site is laid out. And I guess I would say if we can do it and maintain the feasibility of the project, we'd be happy to put that anywhere you guys would like in terms of the pass through the net, the the land with a trail. Um, but Guy and I are both relatively pessimistic about having it be along the tracks and far more optimistic. And and it's a likely scenario that we can include it as a jog around the actual development. Um, so as with any project, um, you know, compromise sometimes has to be an option, um, in our minds for it to be successful. And I think this compromise might be a good one. Uh, and then you'll have a mixed-use development where you're both supporting affordable housing in a, in a very, um, you know, needy environment, uh, as well as maintaining the open space. Thanks for hearing us. We really appreciate it and I look forward to hopefully more conversations.
Okay, back to members of the board. Questions or comments at this point?
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff.
Uh, I guess I was reading, um, uh, page fifty-one of our packet, and I apologize. It's from a gentleman from Eastern Trail, John Kakmar. And I apologize if I messed up his name. But he, um, is apparently the Eastern Trail, uh, is currently engaged in a contract under the MDOT PPI program for conceptual feasibility of creating off-road trip of an off-road trail through Bedford and Saco, and the railroad easement will be assessed for viability and cost for future eastern trail development. So it sounds to me like they're already in the midst of kind of reviewing and studying connectivity, um, which is kind of where we went with our previous meeting, uh, along with the Riverwalk Trail. But so there are funds allocated and maybe Mr. Hamlin can weigh in because I think he's a pretty avid with with the trail groups. Is that correct? They currently have some some monies available and are researching and studying this, um, which obviously probably be going along this parcel. Is that correct that it's under review?
Yeah, uh, Jeff, it is. Um, I, uh, give a pat on the back to, uh, the city manager across the way, Jim Bennett. I think Jim has recognized as well as anybody locally in Saco, Bedford, uh, what a good, strong tie-in to the Eastern Trail, uh, could mean to downtown Bedford and Saco. Uh, so, yeah, he's been part of, um, uh, pushing this along. Uh, yep, there is something called a PPI program available to municipalities and nonprofits. Uh, and yes, the Eastern Trail Alliance was awarded uh, actually two grants within the past less than a year. One is to, uh, study the feasibility of connecting the, uh, the gap between the Bedford and Saco ends of the trail, bringing it across the river, of course, and the other is, uh, further south from Kennebunk down to North Berwick. But, um, M dot seems to be the holdup right now. The paperwork hasn't, um, quite finalized, but this should be, uh, in the offing, uh, VHB, a well-recognized uh, civil engineering firm and probably other disciplines as well. Um, it's going to be the consultant on that, so we're excited about that because they are a a major league outfit, if you will. So I would say at this point, board, that there's more happening in terms of, um, uh, making this connection, which is about a three-mile gap between roughly Thornton Academy and roughly, um, Southern Maine Healthcare. Um, uh, between, um, closing that. Between closing that gap. Then in the twenty years that I've been associated with the trail. So feasibility study about to get underway. You know, this is still years off optimistically. Very optimistically, two to three years out, construction could begin. But you know, you have to be an optimist in this business, so. Things are looking good right now for closing this gap between the two cities.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if maybe Mr. Laverrier could pipe in. Does maybe he's seen a lot of the the previous plans, like for other sections of the Eastern Trail, a lot of it following the, I believe it's a Summit Gas. Transmission line. Is forty feet of width. A pretty standard. With that they're able to use to create the drainage that they need and the surface area that they need. I think a lot of us that are familiar with the Eastern Trail know some of the beautiful sections that are held within Saco. And I just want to know if that's with the easement, it seems to be sufficient or pretty standard for what the trail is being able to use for their development.
Yeah, I mean, I I think there's certainly places that it's been less than that, but but probably. Thirty's not a lot of space, I mean, to get construction equipment in and whatnot to build the trail, so. You know, I, could they live with thirty and not forty perhaps? I mean, obviously, you know, the trail itself is not thirty feet wide. You know, so grading and whatnot would have to go obviously on either side, and I think if you're trying to accommodate all of that in thirty feet's probably not a bad. Bad width to be working it.
Thank you.
Members of the board, other members of the board. Concerns, comments. All right, stopping at this point, we do need to have a public hearing and so. Might be appropriate at this point to have motion to open a public hearing, Jeff?
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff, I move to open a public hearing for the after eighty-one review of thirty-two Market Street.
Thank you, Jeff, is there a second?
The chair is Sean, I second.
On seconds, thank you, Sean. Discussion. Our poll members of the board, Alissa.
Yes.
Matt.
Jeff.
Joyce.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, Matt will indicate the vote is six oh, to open a public hearing. Isabel, do we have anyone wind up?
So I moved to a different spot, so hopefully my audio gets better. Okay, I'll just remind everyone in the public that if you want to speak, just use the digital raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen to be recognized. There is someone with identifier J C. J C, I've allowed you to talk, just unmute yourself.
Hello, thank you very much. My name is Jane Karen, I live at two sixty-four Lincoln Street in Saco Ward five and I. Utilize a lot of the Eastern Trail along Fortun Academy. And I also go right down to the Diamond Park. And there's actually. Work being done there now to clear part of that park, I guess, so. I think it's very critical that the city consider. The value of keeping. That property open to whatever could happen to connect. To Bedford and the Eastern Trail. I think it's a very, very important. Section that has some possibility there. And of course, I understand about. You know, affordable housing, I work in nonprofit. And I have for thirty-plus years, so with that, it it's a. It's a small one and a half acre lot, I guess, but it does look as though. It would be very cramped to do a little bit of both. But with that, I think the city does acknowledge and needs to continue to seek. Support of affordable housing, maybe elsewhere in the city. It it has to be part of the, you know, I think, top-of-the-line concern for the city of Saco. But also that Eastern Trail, I think it's critically important, especially to connect to Bedford. And I guess that's all I need to say, I thank everyone for their time tonight.
Thank you, Jane. Anyone else, Isabel?
I do not have anyone else with their hands raised at this time.
Okay, then it may be appropriate to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chair, this is Joyce, I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Joyce, is there a second?
Mr. Chair, this is Sean, I second.
Sean seconds, thank you very much, Sean. Discussion. There being none of four members of the board, Matt.
Yeah.
Joyce.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Alissa.
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, Matt will show the vote is six oh, to close the public hearing. Back to members of the board, remaining concerns, questions?
Mr. Chair, this is Sean.
Yes, Sean.
I just wanted to share that. I was hoping for a little bit of a better answer. You know, than than we got as far as viability of the property, I think what we were looking for. Trying to balance the opportunity before us to connect to Diamond Park, to connect to the Eastern Trail, I think everybody's on the same page there. I I completely sympathize with the developer and and the constraints that they have with this particular project as well, so. You know, I'm going back and forth in my head as I consider what my vote would be for a recommendation to council because I'm torn. I certainly appreciate the need for affordable housing and trying to make a project suitable for the city. So that it can be a win-win, but what I'm hearing is is that. In order to do that, it would be a real challenge to fulfill the vision that I think we've all collectively expressed in this meeting and prior meetings, so. I'm somewhat on the fence, I just figured I'd throw it out there, I don't know if other others of my colleagues have a different opinion, but. I'm pretty much walking the line right now, trying to balance, you know, the vision that sounds like it's going to be a little bit difficult for us to achieve, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Other members of the board. Jeff?
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff. I think. I I completely hear what Mr. Nicholas is saying and I and I feel like Mr. Prentle trying to keep us focused. Because they're both very important aspects to our community, having affordable housing as well as the incredible value that Eastern Trail seems to be bringing to us. Particularly as we do our downtown developments in both Bedford and Saco. But I don't think it's necessarily up to us, you know, ultimately, let's see the council's decision. I think we can identify the key points. So with that, I want to make a motion, at least for discussion sake, and hopefully maybe it'll cap encapsulate how we all feel. I move to forward a positive recommendation to the city council. For the sale of the thirty-two Market Street parcel. For affordable housing. However, the board recognizes a tremendous value for the access of the Eastern Trail development. And would strongly recommend that a forty-foot strip of land be retained. Along the railroad tracks for this purpose.
Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chair. We can get the discussion, thank you, sorry, Joyce.
Did you second Sean, I'm sorry?
I did, yeah.
You did, alright, thank you. Thank you, alright, to discussion. Members of the board, yeah, Jeff.
Yeah, I mean, that was just, I mean, my my goal of trying to accommodate both, I mean, we're we're letting the council know that we think that. Affordable housing is is a good opportunity here, but we recognize how important the Eastern Trail is and, you know, unfortunately, it may not be the proposals. Of the app, the people who brought this before us. But maybe there'd be another point, and if nothing else, we've kind of documented and time stamped when this review came before council in two thousand twenty-one. That we recognized a tremendous value of the Eastern Trail. And that was one of the reasons that. We have condition, you would like to see conditions to try to retain at least that strip of access. It's just a thought, like I said, I welcome other people's views.
Thank you, Jeff. Joyce, were you next?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Chair, I would, I would note the. The developer did indicate that they were certainly open to compromise and that they. That there might be a possibility of. Some sort of a trail access along the other side of the property. And then connecting up with the railroad tracks, so. I I don't, I don't know about the, you know, requiring forty feet along the railroad track. I I liked Alyssa's original suggestion that that. We recommend. Retaining some public access. For connectivity. Without without necessarily being as specific as Jeff's. Motion.
Alright. Under discussion, hang on, Jeff, see if there's anyone else.
Mr. Chair, Matt here.
Yeah, Matt.
I seem to agree with Joyce, I, little bit. Too many specifics for me. I I agree, the trail access is great, I think it being more open, I think for me it works. Yeah, specific location, I think is unnecessary. While I don't disagree with the affordable housing, it also seems. Mr. Brochu's motion is specific only to affordable housing. And that. I guess I'm not sure if I. I guess my question is if it, if the proposal changes, then, you know, what, I mean, I understand this is just a recommendation, but I I think the recommendation is. A recommendation could be to sell with the understanding, you know, or the intent to get affordable housing, but I. I guess I would, for me, I don't think limiting it to affordable housing is. Necessary. That's all.
Alright, thank you, Jeff. I mean, Matt, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Anyone else? Members of the board? Jeff, did you want to speak again, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, part of my thought was just given the nature of the parcel and the corner. Is that so much of the Eastern Trail is very symmetric and it's following that rail bed. I just have fears of where it's a year-round trail that would root it through somewhat of a subdivision or a development. And some people are going to be plowing snow onto the trail and access might be a little bit broken up. As well as the rate of speed at which some people like to to ride on the trail. I just feel like with they're following a railroad easement, it that tends to be their pattern, it's a very straight trail. In clearing out a space and and I would be completely open if we if we decide as a board, maybe we should just whole decide to recommend retaining the parcel. For Eastern Trail development after this review is done and their affordability study.
Thank you, Jeff, any other discussion? Yeah, Alissa.
Um, thank you. I I would echo what Joyce said and also just express that, given that this is a recommendation and. Jody's here with us this evening and I'm sure she'll relay this, our sentiments, but I'm okay with Jeff's motion. I agree, I would like it to be a little less specific and just leave it open-ended for. Everyone involved and all the stakeholders to kind of get together and come up with maybe, you know, win-win. That is creative and could even be something we're not thinking of right now, but that the Eastern Trail Alliance is really in favor of. So I would like to leave it with a little more flexibility, but at the end of the day, this is a recommendation and. Jeff's motion does, you know, capture the general spirit of what we're talking about.
Thank you. Back to other members of the board, anything else?
Mr. Chair, this is Sean. Yeah, I I agree with what Alyssa just said, I think it's important for us, and I think Jeff's motion does a good job of it to express. The the duality of what we're trying to accomplish here. It is a recommendation and I think if we if we water down Jeff's motion further. Then we potentially, even though I know Jody's here and she'll represent us well as she always does. It's important for us to say in the motion, here's our recommendation and why, and if there's a way to accommodate that, then that would be. You know, the ultimate win, so I think it captures the affordable housing conversation that has been a strong focus, it captures the desire to can. Connectivity of the Eastern Trail in in the most logical, sensible fashion, and if there's something that could be worked out that way. That that should be the first priority because at the end of the day, if if we. Don't throw that recommendation out there, we're all well enough experienced and Jeff raised enough good points here to say. If you kind of kick the can down the road, then we're going to have these tougher discussions that are site plan review anyway, so why not put forward? What our recommendation is to try to make that process simpler, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and Sean, you're absolutely right, you know, even though the basis of this is the sale of the land. But having your recommend and what your vision for that property is does help us. Going down the road as we're looking at it. It is a small, limited space. So as we do get it, then we will be able to review and saying, well, okay. What is the intended or hopeful? Development of this property, so yes, it does, and it it doesn't hurt. And again, at the end of the day, it is about the sale of the property, but the use of it too. Or the hopeful use of it.
Alright, thank you, Jody. I I I'm, I'm going to support Jeff's motion because I think. Two things, or a couple of things at least are going on here, number one. The forty-foot right-of-way parallel to the railroad. Bed seems the most appropriate. Trail. Configuration. Across that parcel, I'm not so sure. A trail configuration routing to the south and then. Underneath, if you will, the parcel connecting back to the railroad bed is. Is as good a configuration, and so while we have the opportunity. Think the city needs to retain. The best potential configuration for that we can. If there's potential to develop the rest of the property into. Low-cost housing, that that's a wonderful thing. But there are, as others have indicated. Probably many other opportunities within the city of Saco to develop that type of housing other than on this parcel. And so. Overriding for me is, I think. The maintenance of the most appropriate trail configuration. And so I'm going to support Jeff's motion in that respect. Any further discussion? And I'll poll members of the board. Sean.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Alissa.
Yes.
Joyce.
Yes.
Matt.
Yeah.
Now, chair vote, yes, I recommend, that's the recommendation board, six oh. Bob, have we done that clearly enough? With with Jeff's motion?
I I wrote like a madman, I think I got everything that Jeff put down and of course, the. The audio record will show that too, so I think we're in good shape, thank you.
Alright, good. Thank you, members of the board, thank you applicants. Alright, moving on to the next item we have on our agenda is, this is a public hearing. For. Subdivision amendment. For John Wayne's Way. Identified as what, thirty-seven dash eight on tax map one oh one. This is a subdivision amendment to add one additional lot, the applicant is John Lane. Property is zone C one. And our goal this evening is to make a finding on the application completeness, completeness, excuse me. To hold a public hearing and to review the proposed amendment based on the subdivision regulations. Any additional information you would like to impart on the board? As we move into this this evening, Bob.
Only those things that are expressed on the first page of my memo, Mr. Chair. Primarily, as requested by the board, city attorney Tim Murphy has. Supplied an updated overview and opinion on. Just how it is that a subdivision on a private road came to be shown on the same plan. And hopefully, that is clear to members of the board. Also, please, board members, don't overlook the couple of issues that Joe Laverrier has raised. Uh, also, please, board members, don't overlook the couple of issues that Joe LaVaria has raised. Uh, their, their bulleted statements on the first page of my memo regarding, uh, wetlands and also uh, the potential for connectivity, uh, to an adjacent, uh, piece of property. Uh, if you have any questions about either of those, I'm sure Joe or I would be happy to respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. At this point, uh, comments, questions, concerns by members of the board? There being none, I'll turn to the applicant. Who's representing the applicant this evening?
Um, the person representing the applicant is his daughter, Vicky. Um, I'm just going to promote her to speak. Vicky, we can see that you're on with us, but you'll have to unmute yourself so that we can hear you.
Okay.
We think we can hear you now, Vicky.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, the package represents what you folks are attempting to do out here, add the additional lot. Is there anything additional that you want to add that we don't already have in our packet?
Um, I don't believe so. I just wanted to, um, I did have a question, um, because where the, I think it's Joe LaVaria had, the city engineer, had said adding a right-of-way or something to have an additional road put through at some time if the city wanted to do that. Um, but I, I wasn't really sure if that was a necessity at the time because the person that's buying that lot, his house, it's Anton Topchev, and he abuts the land he's purchasing. And we're doing a road maintenance agreement with him. And I just don't see where he's going to own all that property at the end. I can't imagine that he would want to put a road through it to connect it to Boothby Park, especially if he's having to take care of all the maintenance on that road. So I didn't, I didn't know why that had to be done on this plan, why it couldn't be done down the future. You know, if somebody were, I, I believe Anton's just going to have his kids build on it someday. I, I, I believe he plans on, you know, keeping it in the family and he doesn't plan on doing anything with it for quite a while. I'm sorry, I just wasn't sure why we needed to do that at this time.
Joe, can you respond to that? Can, can you clarify that portion? Yeah, and identify how much of an issue that is?
Yeah, I think what I, all I really what I was bringing up was, and I, and I don't have a perfect answer for this because it is a, it is a private road as it stands right now. Like originally when John Lane Way came to the city a number of years ago, it was just that, it was just a private road. Um, and I think, you know, usually on private roads, we don't really talk about future connections or connectivity to adjacent parcels. That's usually something we talk about when it becomes a subdivision. And, and it's, and again, with that, usually they're intended to be public roads. So, you know, this is a little bit of a strange situation because we generally don't have subdivisions on private roads. Um, since this became a subdivision, I thought at least it was worth a discussion of, you know, does it have any merits for us to be thinking about whether this should provide some connectivity to adjacent properties? Um, Fenderson Road, as you know, is a long dead-end road. John Went Lane Way isn't really a long dead-end road, but it's just an extension of a dead-end length from Fenderson Road, obviously. Albeit it takes another property owner to want to be involved. And that's the Legas currently property, um, but that does connect over to, um, I think it was Charles I mentioned, but there, you know, we have others dead-end road in Boothby that potentially this could loop through. That was my reasoning for bringing it up. Um, I, I, you know, didn't understand or I didn't know who was buying the other lot. It's just, you know, shown as a proposed lot. I guess if it's all going to be owned by one person, I, I guess I get that. Um, but if the problem with the private road is that I, you know, where it's not going to be a city street, it's not proposed to be a city street, and, and I don't think we really want it to be right this second anyway. Um, it's difficult because I think, you know, even though there was a connection, if there was a connection made through, I don't think it just cause blankly gives somebody the right to use it. It, it is still a private road, so they would have to negotiate to utilize that connection. So I'm not sure how much it really gains us. I just, I threw it out there as really, if it's not, if it's not on the plan now, if John Lane Way was to ever be upgraded to become a city street, let's just say, without that connection over to Legas, I think it'll be hard for us to get it at a later date would be my guess. Um, so that was my reasoning for at least putting it up there as a, should that's something we'd be talking about. I don't know if that helps Dawn and on.
Well, let me, let me ask you a question, just so it's clear in my mind, uh, what you're talking about, Joe. Uh, at the T end, if you will, uh, of the, of John Lane's Way. Um, it sounds like what you were contemplating is extending that right-of-way uh, southwesterly to the boundary, uh, with the Legas property. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. With, in, in other words, with the incipient dedication of that right-of-way, you know, so that it could conceivably be used in the future. Either it's an extension of the private road or as, um, a portion of uh, John Lane Way if it ever became public and accepted by the city.
Yes.
Okay. Is that clear to everyone? I, I'm looking at the drawing. Is that that clear to everyone? Okay, good. Right. Other? Vicky, while we still have you, any other, uh, things you want to add? Any other comments you want to add?
No, I don't think so. I think it's all right there.
All right.
Clarification from last meeting.
All right, members of the board, additional comments, questions, concerns? There being none, uh, then we do have to have a public hearing. So, oh wait, no, I, I, I think what we should do first, we need to do first is find the application complete if we're satisfied that it is. And so could I have a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chair, this is Alyssa.
Yeah.
Um, I'll move to find the application for final subdivision review to be complete.
Thank you, Alyssa. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, Matt here, I'll second.
Matt, thank you. Discussion of the motion? Now poll members of the board. Alyssa.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, recommend, the vote is six oh, finding the application complete. Uh, if there are no other comments or questions by members of the board at this point, might be appropriate to open a public hearing. Do I have a motion to that effect? Jeff? Could you have your hand up, Jeff?
Well, actually, I think Sean was starting with the motion.
Oh, okay. I, I got confused. All right, Sean, did you?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I moved that we opened the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Do I have a second?
Chair, this is Jeff, I second.
Jeff seconds, thank you. Without discussion, I'll poll members of the board, Matt.
Yeah.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, recommend, the vote is six oh, public hearing is open. Do we have anybody waiting to speak? Isabel?
Um, any attendees who are left, if you'd like to speak on this item, just use the digital raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Um, I don't have anyone with their hands raised at this time.
Thank you, Isabel. Since there's no one waiting, wishing to speak on this item this evening, could I have a motion to close the public?
Mr. Chair, this is Sean. I moved that we close the public here.
Thank you, Sean. Is there a second?
Mrs. Jeff, I will second.
Jeff seconds, thank you. Without discussion, poll members of the board, Sean?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Matt?
Yeah.
Chair vote, yes, recommend, show vote is six oh, close public hearing. Back to members of the board. Additional comments, questions, concerns? I'm interested in knowing and hearing, uh, from members of the board in regards to the suggestion that, that Joe has made relative to extending that right-of-way over to the Legas parcel uh, for the possibility of future connectivity. Uh, let's hear from members of the board one at a time. So, uh, Matt, let me start with you. What, what's your, what's your thoughts on that?
Um, I don't know. I don't, I don't have anything, uh, I don't have anything else to add to it, really.
All right. Sean, how about you? What do you think?
Yeah, it would seem on the surface to make a lot of sense. It doesn't look like it would be, uh, a lengthy distance to extend that, to create that flow. Um, and, and I think it's a fairly good recommendation by Mr. LaVaria.
Thank you, Sean. Alyssa, how about you?
Um, I'm in favor of it. I, I think there would have to be a lot of things to fall into place. A lot of things would have to fall into place with this particular private road for it to be utilized in the future. Um, and I do, that, I was probably more in favor of it before I heard that it's going to be, you know, the same party across the street that's buying this new lot, and it may not make as much sense. Um, knowing that now, but I, if it, you know, can't hurt to have it there, I think it makes sense to. I'm just doubtful that it will ever really get utilized.
Uh, thank you, Alyssa. Joyce, how about you? What are your thoughts?
Um, you know, I remember Fenderson Road. I remember Fenderson Road when it was a very short dirt road, so um, we think that things aren't going to change. Um, I, I wonder twenty, thirty, forty years from now, um, I think we would be glad that we um, extended the right-of-way to the property line. Um, because I, I think things do change and it's in common ownership now, but that could change a few years down the road. Um, I mean, and just because there's a right-of-way doesn't mean that they have to actually build the road. So it doesn't really add costs to the applicant.
All right, thank you, Joyce. Jeff, what are your thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yes, I absolutely echo Joyce, uh, Joyce's view. Um, lots of things change very quickly. Um, the fact that we're classifying it as, you know, a subdivision, it's, it's under our review, that's part of our review criteria is to, uh, make sure that it incorporates future connectivity. And it looks like a very reasonable thing to do. And as the applicant's brought up, if it's going to be under common ownership, um, it's not a big deal. It's kind of like a paper street, if you will, but it does allow that option in the future. And I think that we would be short-sighted, um, not to incorporate that into this approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. My own comments briefly. Uh, talk about Fenderson Road. Uh, Joyce says she remembers, I remember a friend of mine who lived at the very beginning of Fenderson Road, did some work for him years ago. And I think you've heard me talk about this before. Fenderson Road, this time of year, used to be an absolute nightmare. You know, with, it was, it was a muckhole. And, and I remember an individual, I forget what his name was, um, carrying heating oil to his house in five-gallon cans, walking through the woods because there would be no, uh, oil delivery man that would go down, uh, that road to deliver oil. I watched him do that one whole Saturday afternoon, ten gallons at a time. Um, I saw, I remember the police chief or the fire chief, excuse me, years ago, saying he would not take a fire truck down Fenderson Road. And I remember the people down Fenderson Road being told by the insurance companies, move out, shut the power off because we're not going to cover, you know, any casualty that happens to your house because we have no access to it. So, uh, just a little bit of background, Fenderson Road has come a long way in the process over the years. Anyway, uh, back to the issue at hand. Uh, I'm okay with extending the right-of-way over to the Legas, uh, property boundary provided, of course, and I'm assuming it does not take away from the buildable area of the proposed lot, uh, that's being, um, uh, proposed here this evening. And in that regard, I'm assuming, uh, Joe has considered that. And I'm assuming that, uh, the extension of that right-of-way is not going to take away from the minimum lot area required uh, for the proposed lot. That being the case, and assuming that's the case, in that regard, I'm supportive of extending that right-of-way over to the, that would gas, uh, property line. Uh, anyone else have any other general comments, specific comments before we? Then I think it might be appropriate at this point, if someone is prepared to make a motion? Anyone?
Mr. Chair, this is Sean.
Sean?
I moved that the board grant approval of the amended right-of-way and final subdivision plan submitted by applicant John Lane, based on the findings of facts and conditions of approved dated April sixth, twenty twenty-one, with the condition that the right-of-way be extended to the Legasi property.
Thank you, Sean. Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chair, this is Joyce. I second.
Joyce, thank you. Discussion of the motion? There being none, I'll poll members of the board. Joyce?
Yes.
Matt?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, recommend, the vote is six oh. Thank you, everyone. All right. I think that concludes all the items we have on our agenda this evening. Bob, you have any additional information you want to impart on the board? Next meeting is, uh, the thirteen?
Uh, yeah, it's easy. A week out?
A week out, yeah. They're always a week out.
Yeah, uh, so we have endeavored to, uh, shorten this up a little bit. Um, the, uh, the sixty-four Old Orchard Road item, uh, will be returning to us. Uh, and also, uh, one forty-six Main Street, the, that contract zone has been approved by the council. Uh, so that will come back for planning board, uh, for site plan review. Uh, those are the, the two items, regular review items, and then, uh, uh, the meeting will open up at five thirty with a discussion on sprinklers and ADUs. Uh, David, the two Davids and Isabel have, uh, each worked on, uh, developing language. And as I understand it, they have simplified it greatly, should be understandable. Uh, so, uh, we're trying to shorten things up a little bit for next time, but, um, indeed, we'll see you a week from tonight.
Isabel, if I may request, Isabel and Bob, if I may request, uh, that information on sprinklers, I'd like to see that come forward to us uh, ahead of when the package is available next Thursday or Friday, if we could. Um, if it's that close to being finalized, uh, Isabel, if you could get that out to us so that we have, um, enough time, if you will, to look at it very carefully. Uh, even before the packet comes up, if that's possible.
Yep, that's possible. Um, it, it's been finalized, so I'm happy to send that over to you, um, as soon as tomorrow morning.
Great. And that would be great if we come out of that workshop that night to the point where we, we're coming back like a week or two later with an amendment to the ordinance. You know, to be, uh, considered in public hearing by the planning board and then forward it up to the council. That'd be great if we, if we progress that far within the next few weeks. Um, want to emphasize again that, that we had started working on short-term rentals in our workshops, uh, but subs- Uh, but subsequent to. What we're doing next week, Bob, I really think what we need to do is is shift gears, if you will. And get back to the master plan developments in the PR district if we can. Um, council was fully expecting. That we were going to go to work on this post haste. And I think that's a reasonable expectation. I would really like to see us get back into that discussion and work on that. You know, if we could. Um, I'm in agreement with Council Berman. Um, we need. Master plan developments in Saco. Uh, are they appropriate in the Poland Road District, probably? Uh, and as I told Council Berman, let's just figure out how to do it right. But let's just get it right one time, you know, right up front. And so I'd like to see us get back to work on that if we can. Um, Jody, any updates from the council for us?
No, um, no, as you know, we did not have our meeting last night. Um. Last night's agenda has completely been switched to next week, so everything that was on for last night will be next Monday. Um, I will see you guys in three weeks. I am on vacation next week and then the following day, yes. And then the following Tuesday is the council meeting because we're not having it for Patriots Day. Yeah, Patriots Day. I think that's what it is. Um, so we will be having council meeting on Tuesday night that week. Um, the week of the twentieth.
Okay, Bob, Isabel, anything additional for the board that we need to to know?
I am all set, Mr. Chairman. I thank you.
All right, thank you, folks. Members of the board, anything? There being none, then I guess motion to adjourn?
In record time.
As Peter would say.
All right, I'm not going to poll members of the board. We're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good night.
Yeah, see you next week.
Thank you, everyone.